This explanation, if it can be called that, is somewhat lacking as well. The mayor has never shared his vision with council, first off, and I'd like to be let in on that secret myself. But secondly, more importantly, that statement shows an amazing lack of insight of what a city attorney does. The city attorney does not cast the vision for the city. He does not help the city make its vision. It's the legislative body and the mayor working, hopefully in tandem, that cast that vision. He helps us stay out of trouble while we try to implement it. That's his role, not to make the vision. He does not and should not provide advice to us on what our vision should be. He provides advice to us on the law, and he's done a job on that that has been unsurpassed. And I would also point out, the letter terminating Frank Wickman's employment or his contract with the city, while not delivered until February, is actually dated January 5, four days after our mayor took office. So to pretend there's some reasoned decision and that this is done because Frank has done something improper, or Frank has not done, that there's some valid reason is just not true. You have applied to the media that you have horrible reasons for Frank's termination, that if you justified them all and you went to the media about them, it would be devastating to Frank's reputation and career. Yet you decided within four days of taking office, and actually before you took office, that Frank was to be gotten rid of. I think that's wrong. So far, we've still heard no reason, no real legal valid reason for why you want to do this. So the question before our council is, what can we do about it? And do we want to do something about it? What is our recourse? To that end, I've introduced our ordinances tonight, and they're going to be on for first reading because we modified our agenda to allow that. Well, we have the legal authority to hire our own attorney as an employee of city council. That is clearly set forth in Kentucky law. Second, we have the legal authority to create the position of city attorney, designate its qualifications, and we have the authority to say that that person will be a non-elected public official, which therefore can only be appointed by the mayor with council's consent. That is the second ordinance I've introduced. And thirdly, we have the legal authority to control the budget and to prohibit the expenditure of funds. And we can prohibit the expenditure of any money to anybody other than the duly-appointed city attorney or as employee of council. And that's the third ordinance I've introduced. It's my recommendation that we exercise all of those legal rights. We have first reading on these ordinances tonight. I hope we have, the council stands behind them, that we stand behind Frank, and that we do this. We have to act now, we have to act, we have to act on this issue, and in my opinion, we need to act now. The immediate issue concerns the unlawful, unjustified arbitrary termination of Frank Wickman. But the issue is broader than that. It's more important than even Frank. Sorry. We have a city to run, and we can't do so without employees. We need good, reliable, dependable employees. We have them now. Will we keep them? Since our new mayor has taken office, he has sent the wrong signal to our employees. Morale is as worse as I've ever seen it in the city among the employees, as they all walk around on eggshells just waiting for the ax to fall. I'm sure all of our good employees are out right now polishing up their resumes for fear that they get fired next. If we allow this treatment of Frank Wickman to stand, we're telling our employees, and we're telling the public, it doesn't matter how long you've been working for the city, it doesn't matter how well you've done your job, it doesn't matter how much your labors have helped the city, nothing will matter except the mayor's arbitrary will. That's wrong, and we need to overturn it.
Jane Longshore is up next.
I've been a resident of Earlanger since 1979. Had a little stint in Boone County prior to that. Recently, I've been Randy Blankenship's speechwriter. I echo every one of his sentiments. I support Frank 100%, as everyone in this room does. There's no reason not to. My concern, Mayor, is your vision, and we haven't heard your vision. If you want council to approve you, I've been looking for the right word, approve for you to spend money on a babysitter to tell you how to do your job, ask them to do that. You spent no time in council chambers, ever, learning the process, procedure, or anything that goes along with running a city. It's evident now. Everyone can see it. If you haven't, go watch a couple council meetings, you'll understand. You not only fired the city attorney, but more importantly, you fired Mr. Earlanger. Thank you.
All right, the next list of people that wanted to speak this evening are the Commonwealth Station comments. The first one up on this is Martha Bowman.
My name is Martha Bowman. I've lived on Riggs Avenue my entire life. My husband and I bought my childhood home and are presently raising our own family in it. My mother, Rita Beeler, lived almost her entire life on Riggs as well. She grew up in the Red Brick at 3226 Riggs. Her father, my grandfather, John Wagenger, readied the street for electricity and plumbing so that he and the few neighbors they had could receive utility services. She is now 91 years old, and I'm sure wish that she could be here to speak to you about this community and what it has meant to her. Even though she's 91, she's still extremely sharp to talk to, and I have kept her informed about what is happening. She just shakes her head. See, she knows many of you on council, and if there was someone whom my mom respected, then usually I respected that person as well, because I believe she's a good judge of character. I have respected most of you all these years, not because I know all of you personally, but because I trust my mom's judgment when it comes to knowing people. However, I just sat in her room this past weekend and told her that I am losing respect for some of my council members, not because you're not good people, but because this whole zoning process has come across as making some of us homeowners feel as though we don't count. You see, we don't make a lot of money. We live paycheck to paycheck. We make the best out of what we have. We take pride in our homes and in our yards and try to maintain them, maintain them the best we can. But we don't have connections. We don't have power. So to some of us, that makes us feel as though we aren't significant. I don't know how many of you actually live near the Commonwealth Station zoning area, and you probably don't worry about the decision that you're making because it's not going to affect you on a daily basis, but it will affect myself and our neighbors every day. You see, I have an entire folder here, materials that I've been collecting and following with every communication about Commonwealth Station. The very first time we heard about it was after the August 23, 2013, letter that was mailed not to those of us who are in the area, but only to those within the zone. It never dawned on anyone here that those people who live two, or three, or four houses down from the zoning would be affected too. I think that is where the real issue for me began, and for most of my neighbors. Thankfully, we had neighbors within the zone who shared the information with us so we could attend that meeting in September. At that time, I sent a letter to Mark Fields and was told that each council member received a copy. I know this to be true because one of the council members told me he had received the letter. However, the council members were not present at the open house and not at all the meetings since then. It would have been nice to be able to speak to the people who have vote, who have to vote on this zoning. I think that if more open communication had taken place in the beginning, I would not be standing here right now. You see, I'm not against the idea of Commonwealth Station. What I am against is the way that the process has taken place. It appears to some of us that minds were made up and decisions were made long before everything was presented to the public. I hope that I'm wrong about that, but it does make one lose trust and faith in a council when you never really get to sit down and have a conversation with them and feel as though your voice does not matter. I've read the quotes in the newspaper articles recently. In the last article, two council members seemed to be concerned with the fact that this has gone on too long. They want it to be finished. A quote, "Just because we've taken the time. Isn't anything worthwhile worth taking the time to do it right? If there is still uneasiness in questions, isn't it better to take the extra time and do it right rather than push something through just because you're tired of working on it?" Another council member was quoted as saying that a second meeting would hinder resident participation in the discussion, but how do you know that? If there had been a special meeting called, at least the public would have had a chance to speak prior to the night that you're voting on it for the second time. This makes me feel as though what I have to say, what my neighbors have to say, doesn't matter. My husband can continue because he's after me. My time's up.
Vince, you're up next. I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way, unfortunately.
All right, he can finish.
That was shovel. Here's the bulldozer.
No, I'd like you to continue mine, please, because I took a lot of time writing this and put my heart and soul into it. If you would like to start.
Martha, you can submit that to public record if you'd like.
I actually have letters for all the council members if they'd like them.
That'd be great. All right, Vince.
Like I said, that's the shovel. Here's the bulldozer. I shoot from the hip. I don't care what you guys think of me, but I love my city. I've been here 20, almost 24 years. Before that, I lived in Elsbeere. What's going on is a lack of trust. I've been told that, oh, no, we're not ramrodding this through. Right. We're not trying to push this through. Right. There are some people that are going to benefit from this. Thornwild Inc., or whatever it's called, has purchased properties in the zone before it was made public. Don't know how that came to be. Don't really care. I just know that they're looking for developing down Riggs Avenue into a residential area. This is supposed to be a gateway into our city. Our city is not that way. That's our residences, yes, but what we want is that way. What they're planning to do does not lead people into our businesses, other than the few that are up here. My request is that you guys vote no on this. Vote with integrity as the, oh, what is it? The mission statement of Earlangers. Supposed to vote with integrity, and I don't see that right now. I see that people have been hiding things, or not being truthful about everything, or just not saying anything at all. And there are some people that say, we need to push this through because it's gone on too long. Well, how long has it gone on? I mean, we've known about it for what, two and a half years? The public has? It's been going on longer than that, I know. I was told it's been going on since '09, I believe.
You've got one minute.
I'm just about finished, anyway. I'm just pleading for my city, for my neighborhood, if anybody else lived in this area, they would have the same views. If it was coming into your neighborhood and they were taking away homes, taking away single-family homes where you have been all your life. You know, I just, I just can't see it. I'm not totally against the whole thing. I think the area could be developed and made better looking, yes, but to come back into the residential area and take away individual homes is not right. I ask you to vote no on this.
Next up is Janine Schilling. Janine, you're up next. And then we've got Bob Schilling.
My name is Janine Schilling. My husband and I have owned the commercial property adjacent to Super Bowl. The deed address is 481 Earlanger Road. We are the second largest property in what is being referred to as the commercial zone. We bought this shopping center to suit our own needs, and we've done our very best to serve the community. We have a new tenant coming in. We estimate with the three businesses that are all family-friendly, healthy services, that we will have somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 families that we serve a week, which brings a lot of people to Earlanger. It may not be the tax revenue that you're looking at, but these people spend money. Quite often, they're running to Crestview, or running to Target, or wherever, and we hope that, you know, things will develop, but we don't want to, to vote yes for this. We're a game player. We already have submitted plans to improve our property, but we've been through quite a bit. We bought our property in 1993. After we bought our property, we were asked, would we sell our property to Phil Dries in 2002? We were not interested, and after that point, we had what we consider a lot of violations. We entered into a four-year lawsuit, which the judge ruled in our favor on the issues. However, some of these things that we came across, we don't feel like were fair, and we don't feel like anybody stood up for us and stopped what we thought should have, should have been stopped to begin with. If I can give you some examples, one of the codes said that you cannot erect a building in a parking lot. I'm referring to Phil Dries's building on the corner that is adjacent to our property. They built on our sanitation pipe. The judge ruled in our favor on that, that that was an easement. Our property still remains flooded because there was no stormwater runoff system, and even today, there is not, and we have ponding in the playground at the location of the daycare. Also, Mr. Dries put a parking pad on his property that he has to enter on our property to access it. Feel free to drive over there and see what I'm talking about. Of course, the weather is limiting us a little bit. Also, I had some experiences.
45 seconds, Janine. Please.
Okay, okay. Anyway, we feel like that Mr. Dries, who was referred to as owning some property on Riggs, is getting some favoritism, while this code, it limits a lot of us and it damages our investment. If Dunkin' Donuts loses, or if they move on, if they expand, and that drive-through over there is not used within like 12 months, they lose the right to have a drive-through. I mean, I just think in today's world, a drive-through is a part of a community, of a service. You see banks with drive-throughs, you see dry cleaners with drive-throughs, and we don't feel either. We were on a committee. It was not a democracy. It was a lot of paid employees, and it was a lot of people that have property or have adjacent properties that are going to benefit from this plan if it goes through and turns commercial.
All right, Janine, our time's up.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bob Schilling. I'd just like to add a little bit what my wife was saying. We've been involved with the city of Earlanger for over 20 years with our business. I think the main thing I wanted to mention is, I think, the vision of Earlanger. I think this road they're taking as far as with the city development, they want to do as far as the zoning, it prohibits our business at least. That's all I can speak on behalf of. She was a member of that committee, but unfortunately, she was the, if I were to put it in a game, she was probably Northern Kentucky playing UK. She was Northern Kentucky. There's been nobody in her favor as far as with this situation, but you have to realize something. She has a business she built. It is what it is, and now she's going to have a business. If a tenant moves out and wants to have another daycare move in a year later, she will not be able to do that, based on what they have proven here. Along with that, I think it's a bad move as far as on the vision behalf of Commonwealth to think that there's not going to be traffic problems or parking problems with this development, because you're putting in businesses, you don't know what the space or the parking is, because you know I'm going to go buy a zoning, so therefore you know what type of business is moving in there. So what you're going to have is you're going to have people actually parking in residential areas that might be going to that business, and I think that's a big problem for the vision of this Earlanger area. Thank you.
Next up is Lucy Riffle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I also live in the Commonwealth Station zone. It has been in my family since 1922. I think I trump a few people here, like the lady on Riggs Avenue. I have pictures of my father, my grandfather, and Phil Tolliver's father building Earlanger Road when it was a dirt path. The only complaint I had with the process that went through, it's been going on at least three years that I know of, was that when the committee was formed, there were no homeowners originally put on the committee. I applaud the committee for the process that they had of having the open forums and letting everyone know and letting everyone come. And at that time, I expressed that displeasure, and I was asked to become a member of the committee and made most of the meetings since that time. I applaud the committee for listening to the citizens and for changing the zone. Originally, it went way down Riggs Avenue and down Earlanger Road, past the school to include Liberty and Talbot. From listening to the citizens, it's been brought back basically to the area that is already commercial. The zoning is to keep that area as nice as it can be. It's already commercial. As I said at the last committee meeting, I would rather have seen the building that Randy leases stay as Mrs. Gevert's house, and I would rather have seen the power plant stay as Mrs. Browning's house, and Mr. Outs's house instead of Super Bowl. I mean, I can go that far back, but I do applaud the committee for what they've done. I do applaud them for listening to the citizens and the input. Janine was on the committee and was able to give her input every time, and lots of different changes were made because of her input. Her husband's comment just now about a daycare not being allowed, that's not true. It is in that zone, and it would always be allowed there. So, thank you, Mayor. My point of being here tonight is that I asked the council to approve this new Commonwealth Station plan as it has been amended per the requests of the citizens. Thank you.
Diane Brown.
My name is Diane Brown. As we are being requested to keep our comments to three minutes, I would like to request that we continue to follow Robert's rules, and only those who are signed up to speak on this issue be allowed to speak on this issue. I've been involved with this project since the beginning, way back in 2012, when it was a loose concept, and asking for citizens to come out and talk about how they use this corner, to talk about what they'd like to see, to walk around the surrounding properties with some planners and developers. By developers, I mean people who help cities develop better zoning and better places to live, not property developers who come in and buy properties and redesign them. We met at that time with professional city planners, both those in Northern Kentucky and those from outside, held demos, critiqued concept drawings. The steering committee was then made up of residential owners, business owners, business leasers, developers, city council members, planning development services in Northern Kentucky members, and other citizens of the city. The steering committee has continued to meet well into 2015. This project was inspired by a developer who took it upon himself to build two properties in the style of the Commonwealth Station and the city building. Property owners in the proposed zone have already begun changing their properties, and some have requested rezoning into what will become the new Commonwealth Station zone. They're rezoning it into whatever it is currently that is common to that. Let's be a little honest, this area behind Super Bowl and the surrounding area is less than it once was. It no longer lives up to its placement as a gateway to our city off the expressway. It's not a blighted area, and this is an attempt to keep it from becoming so. This new zone strives to bring back that great glory. It does not require, nor does it demand, that any property owner do anything. It does provide more potential uses. It does provide more potential development. No property is being proposed to be taken for this zone. No property is going to be bought by the city for this zone. There is a high threshold of development before the new design changes take effect, meaning that a property owner must voluntarily choose to make a major change to their property before they would be required to meet the new designs. Regular maintenance, storm maintenance repairs do not require a property owner to conform to the new Commonwealth Station designs. The zone has been greatly reduced, as Ms. Riffle said, and it has limited to its reach within the surrounding residential areas and will not allow new multifamily homes in those areas. Development of this area will provide added traffic controls to provide better pedestrian safety than currently exists in that area. I did quickly do a calculation. There have been four public input meetings during this time, plus a public hearing at the Kenton County Planning Commission, plus tonight's public hearing.
We're out of time, Diane. The next speaker is G.W. Wells. All right, that's our last one that signed up. Were there any other people that would like to speak on Commonwealth Station, just as we did with our other topics? Okay, seeing none. Then according to the revised agenda, we are allowing the city attorney to give his report and respond to the concerns expressed by the public, meaning Mr. Wickman.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, of course, I want to express my deepest appreciation for all the support and kind comments I have received tonight. Hope that's better. As in previously indicated tonight, it was on February 5 of this year, only 36 days into the mayor's term of office. He called me into his office and abruptly fired me as the city attorney, effective June 1. He didn't provide me with any reason for that termination. He didn't give me an opportunity to correct whatever he perceived as deficiencies in my performance. That day was just absolutely the worst day of my life since my wife Helen died eight years ago. Now, your tremendous support for me this evening makes tonight absolutely the best day of my life since then. One of Helen's little pearls of wisdom was always the phrase, "Let go and let God." Those words happen to be on display on the signboard of the church across the street. That tells me that Helen had something to do with you all being here tonight. I simply cannot express to you my gratitude. Words simply won't do that. So all I can do is say thank you. Thank you very, very much. Mr. Mayor, I've got three things to say to you. When you took that city attorney position away from me, you hurt me deeply. You took away, you hurt me deeply. You took away a relationship that I had worked for almost 50 years to develop. It was a relationship that I was very proud of. It was one that I was passionate about, and still am, and it's one I was deeply devoted to. And you just took it away from me like that, with no reason expressed to me, anyway. And the reasons that I've heard expressed on social media are conflicting, and they simply don't make any sense. I don't know why you made that decision, but I do know I didn't give you any reason at all to make that decision. My job as a city attorney has been expressed here many times tonight, is not to have a vision for the city. It is simply to provide good legal advice to the mayor and to the city council, so that they know what they can do and what they can't do. I have done that for 49 years. I think maybe longer than you've been alive. And I haven't received any criticism of that performance, as indicated here tonight. I also did that for all of the 36 days you were mayor, as best I could. You handed me my notice of termination on February 5, and as indicated here tonight, that notice was dated January the 5th, which tells me you had made up your mind to terminate me even before you took office. me even before you took office. So, there is nothing that I could have done to satisfy you, and there is certainly nothing that I did while you were the mayor that justifies that termination. Having said that, you campaigned on a theme of changing the city government. If you haven't already realized, that you will, that you are not going to be able to accomplish any substantial changes at all without developing a consensus of the city council. That's what good leaders do. They develop consensus. President Reagan, President Roosevelt, President Kennedy, and even, disregarding his moral deficiencies, President Clinton had the ability to do that, and they got good things done. That's what you are going to have to do if you want to accomplish any substantial changes that you campaigned on. I am still willing to serve this city. I love it. I was born here. I will die here. I'm willing to serve this city in any capacity that the city council wants me to. Regardless of the way you've treated me, I am more than willing to try to help you with your relationship to the city council and to recover from the damage that you've already done to it. Because developing that consensus, being that leader, is what the city needs, and they can expect us to do no less. In conclusion, I again want to express my satisfaction to everybody that's been here to support me. It's probably the most humbling two hours I've ever had, and I just can't say enough about it. Like I said before, words just aren't sufficient. But I've finally come to the conclusion, maybe a little beer and pizza will do that. And I would like to invite all of you down to, what's the name of the place? Salvador's on my tab, and meet me there after this meeting tonight. Likewise, I want to announce and remind everybody that the Yellen-Helen Strikeout Cancer Bow-a-Thon is March 28th. So, please, please, help us in that endeavor. In the last seven years, we divided $126,000 between Bluegrass, Hospice of the Bluegrass, and the American Cancer Society, and we would certainly want to continue with that success. Thank you very much.
All right, would any members of council like to respond?
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Ms. Goodmore.
I don't think anybody here had a bad word to say about Frank. That's it. I still got 90 seconds left.
Great. Any other comments?
Mayor.
Responses.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that we have a special council meeting on Saturday for second reading on the three ordinances we've introduced tonight. I've got a notice prepared setting at noon on Saturday. I'd like to see if the council would sign off on that and have this special meeting so that we can go ahead and vote these ordinances in.
I'll remind you that that is our, the same date as our budget retreat.
Which means everybody will be here already.
Might end up being right afterwards.
And we'll just do it right afterwards. I think we're supposed to conclude the budget meeting by noon, and we can start the special meeting then.
My second.
My third.
It's not done by motion, it's done by written request, and it's being circulated.
He gives us good advice.
Are there any other comments in response from council?
I do have to say one more thing. I, this is very hard for me, but I do remember the first time it was on council, I went to the Kentucky League of Cities for training, and I was never so proud of our city as when I saw Frank Wickman, surrounded by all these attorneys, that he just knew the answer. They all respected him, and they still do. I mean, we've got so many attorneys here tonight, and I really want to thank the people for coming out. You elected us, we are trying to do what you elected us for, and I hope you take that to heart, that any decision that we make here, we do it from the heart. We don't, I don't have an agenda. I vote for the people. You tell me your problems, and then I take that in consideration for the greater good of all of Earlanger. But I think tonight, you're going to see that we're losing a very valuable, valuable person, and I hate to see that in Earlanger. I think that's why we've been on the cutting edge for all the years that I've been here at Earlanger. And Bill Shire, you can attest to that also, because we've always been a leader, and I think Frank had a lot to do with that. Thank you.
Any other responses?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm going to try and get through this. Sorry. No, I'm not sorry. I damn sorry. Somebody sent me this beautiful quote, and it's from "Me to You." I hope you listen to it. Great leaders combine dignity and decency with order, prerogatives, and governance. Civility, tact, and gracefulness are sophisticated leadership skills that facilitate greater employee pride, self-respect, purpose in our work, and enhancement of the product. It is our solemn duty as leaders to diminish or eliminate the toxic management practices that combine to form the enemy from within. Albert Einstein once said, "What is right is not always popular, and what is popular is not always right." Malicious, discourteous, discriminatory, or deliberately hurtful behavior towards their employees by their bosses should never be accepted." That's from "Me to You," sir.
Thanks, Patty.
Right.
Another.
Something I want to say to Frank. Frank, you commented on the marquees across the street. I am in charge of that. I don't know why I was told to put that there.
Well, Helen told you.
The other side says, "No decision is a decision." And the only reason there's two things on that sign is because I couldn't get the key to work on the other side. This side was for you.
Any other comments, responses, council? Then with the amended agenda, we allow for a motion or the reading of the appropriate legislation that is responsive to the concerns expressed by the public and vote thereon. Yeah, so the motion would be...
Just for first reading is all we can do tonight, yeah.
I can't move that.
We've got three second readings first, is that correct?
We'll have to come back through all the other business after this.
We'll just read his ordinances, and that's all you need to do. You don't need to take a vote on anything on the ordinance at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Blankenship, you have proposed three ordinances. I have them.
Yes.
Do you have them numbered, or in order in which you want them read for the first time?
I don't think the order in which they're read matters, just as long as they all three get their first reading.
My first night here, I don't know how you number your ordinances, or...
Clerk does, Shire, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the clerk assigns those numbers after the second reading.
That's correct.
Okay, very well. I think my role tonight is, in an interim position, is to do the first reading on the ordinances, the procedure by which, my experience is that there's not necessarily a vote on the first ordinance. I don't know what your practices are.
We do not normally vote on first reading. We just have first reading and get set for second reading.
I'm going to start with the ordinance that I have here first on my computer screen, and allow the clerk to number those ordinances, has read in conformity with the numbers that you already have in place for any ordinances you've issued so far this year.
That's fine.
Is there any chance for discussion?
Yeah, there, I mean, certainly there can be discussion on the ordinance after it's read.
Just as a matter of point, Mr. Wickman is still the city attorney till June 1. Shouldn't he do the first reading?
I mean, he is the attorney.
Well, you know, the fact is, is that I think the mayor's asked me to be here. I don't, if Frank wants to do the first reading, I mean, that's...
Is he paying you, sir?
So...
That's a good question.
Yes, I do, I'm normally compensated for work as an attorney and attending...
Okay, that's interesting. Frank, would you please read the ordinance?
I think there needs to be a motion and a second for each one of them.
All right.
The first ordinance that I have on top of mine is the ordinance establishing the employment position as a city council attorney.
I move, we have first reading on that ordinance.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is the one that I would like to refer to committee. This is the position of city council attorney. There are some items that I think are, that are not clear to me within the ordinance, and again, I'm not opposing this in and of itself, but there are some items around the appointment tenure that I think are not clear, that I would like to see, I would, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to a committee to have further discussion, so that we can further clarify what would be involved in here, rather than have to pass it and then try to amend something later on.
We have a motion to amend it. Is there a second?
Well, my motion was to refer to committee, but I think that's something we can do at this time, correct?
I'm sorry, excuse me, a motion to refer to committee.
Is that inappropriate?
Yeah, that's appropriate.
You've got a motion and a second on the floor, you should vote on it before.
It overrides.
It overrides, but there's no second. That motion dies.
No second? For lack of a second, the motion dies.
Okay. I'd like to amend the ordinance to change the Section 1.1, the appointment, to require adding some language around that the passage of a municipal order to appoint the city council attorney shall require approval by three-fourths of the entire legislative body. I think with right now, there's no clear situation where if there is a tie, if there was a 6-6 vote on a municipal order, then I would assume that it would be dead at that point, if there were not seven votes secured.
Right. A 6-6 tie would die, would kill it, right?
My only, my concern here was that we would like to have either two-thirds or a three-quarter majority on that type of municipal order.
I'm sorry, I really did not understand your motion. It's in regard to 1.1?
Yeah, the appointment.
And your proposed amendment is...
My, one amendment would be the, just a spelling change in council. But the second one would be to add some language that would require a two-thirds or three-quarter majority, rather than just a simple majority, for approval of that municipal order, or city council attorney.
Okay. Again, there's a motion, needs a second.
Is there, okay, so we...
Is that a motion?
Motion to amend?
Yes.
Is there a second? For lack of a second, the motion dies. Any other discussion?
Call for a motion?
I, one quick question. Mr. Blankenship, did you draft these documents?
I'm not sure I need to answer that question, but I did draft some of it, and I asked Mr. Wickman's assistance. I had the ability to take advantage of the best attorney in Northern Kentucky on municipal law, and I took advantage of that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
One no. All right, motion carries. And then the next ordinance?
The next ordinance I have is the ordinance establishing the office of city attorney. Again, we need a motion and a second to read it.
I say a move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
My only concern with that was the requirement of four years as city attorney. I just wasn't sure if that was appropriate, or if we were looking for just experience as a city attorney. Now, I know it's not likely, but I would think about some of the attorneys, the Kentucky League of Cities, and if, and I'm not aware that J.D. Cheney was ever a municipal attorney, however, I would think he would be more than qualified to actually serve in that capacity.
If he applies for the job, we'll consider it.
But we're putting a requirement that he needs to have four years.
Well, I think that's because we don't want somebody, you know, kind of using us as their learning curve. We didn't put an onerous amount of experience in there. I wanted to put 47 years or more, but I felt that might be a bit much.
Hey, Gary, I'm having a hard time hearing you. What was that question about? What specifically?
I was asking about the four years as a city attorney requirement, if that was appropriate at this point. The other piece that I didn't see in here, that I think we should delay this one for, was we didn't have anything in Attachment A specifically listing out the compensation for, on a per diem or a salary basis, for the position of city attorney as a non-elected officer.
Actually, that's laid out in paragraph, Section 1.2 of the attachment.
That was just the city council employee attorney.
That's all this person would get, yeah. I'm sorry, you're talking about city attorney?
Yes.
But that would be done by contract.
But I, my understanding was that when we're creating the position as a non-elected officer, that makes them an employee of the city, rather than an independent contractor requiring a change to the pay and classification plan.
I don't know. Frank?
I'm a little bit confused. We're now talking about the city attorney's position.
Yes, to make them a non-elected officer.
We're talking about Attachment A.
Correct.
Attachment A in Section 1.2.1.
No, this is the, I guess, not the city council attorney, but the city attorney, is that correct?
That's what I'm talking about.
The city, the actual city attorney becoming a non-elected officer versus the employee of the city council.
That's correct. The compensation is set forth in 1.2 of Attachment A. That's what you're questioning.
Yeah, I believe that was related to the position of city council attorney, not city attorney.
Those two attachments are identical, as far as, except for the words "city council attorney" and "city attorney." The rates are the same. Now, it's possible that it got mixed up when the copies were distributed.
Did I just overlook it?
But in the copy I have, it's very clearly set forth in 1.2 of Attachment A, and it's entitled "City Attorney."
Maybe it didn't get attached when we sent it out, but it's definitely, it's the same. I mean, if you've got it handy, Frank.
Please?
You have the Section 1.2 that you're talking about in front of you.
I'm looking at it.
And it pertains to city attorney.
That's what the title is, "City Attorney."
That's what I thought. Just checking.
Is it something that needs to be shared with the members of council?
I thought it was.
It was.
Was it?
Yeah. I mean...
Yes, Section 1.2 is city council attorney and not city attorney.
Attachment A...
Yes, that's what...
To the city council attorney and the city attorney. Two different ordinances. Attachment A to each one of them, they're virtually identical, except for the terminology of city attorney and city council attorney. Now, I don't know if that's what you have, but that's what I have and that's what I read, or will read.
Yeah. Do we have that shared? We, I only have the one copy referencing city council attorney.
You're gonna share with him.
Just about to give me a copy.
I didn't bring all mine with me. Sorry. The copies.
We've had a request to take a recess.
No, sure, I'll find it.
This is, this is the city council attorney attachment A.
That's the one thing I did.
I think I'll find it.
Apparently a city, a city attorney attachment A.
They're, they're both the same. Makes no difference. You can look at one. The other one's exactly the same. The word changed.
But it doesn't call out city attorney. That's, I, I just, I'm looking for, to make sure that we have the pay, the pay and classification plan amended. Along with this.
Maybe, maybe I forgot to attach it, but I thought I did. But basically, it says the same language as in the city council attorney, just using a different term, city attorney instead of city council attorney.
It's, um, I don't know that it's something that's necessary for the reading tonight, but it would certainly be necessary for the, to pass it. Would you find that acceptable, Mr. Meyer?
Okay.
So Randy, if you could get that to us, that...
I'll redistribute it.
Yeah, because we're not voting on it.
It's very possible I forgot to attach it. I know, I'm a screw-up. I know.
All right, the, the next ordinance then?
Do you wanna, here, we can make...
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. We, um, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. The next ordinance then?
It's an ordinance of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, creating and establishing the non-elected office of city attorney and amending the personnel pay and class... Personnel pay and class, the reason I'm stumbling is I didn't read the first one, did I?
Yeah.
Now I'll have to find the damn thing. Randy, let me have yours.
Here. There's all three of them. I don't know. My wife is working. I cannot get in the score.
All right. The first ordinance that you approved for first reading is an ordinance of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, establishing a part-time position of employment for an attorney selected, appointed, and hired by the Earlanger City Council as an employee thereof and amending the personnel pay and classification plan to include the provisions for the city council attorney. Section 1.1 provides for the appointment of a city council attorney to be a, selected and appointed and hired through a municipal order of the city, of the Earlanger City Council. Section 2 provides for the compensation pursuant to the amendment of a personnel, the personnel pay and classification plan that's attached to the ordinance. Section 1.3 describes the benefits. Section 1.4 describes the ten, tenure, which is basically an at-will employment. Section 2 provides for the amendment of ordinance 2395, which is the personnel pay and classification plan in conformity with, uh, in conformity with Schedule A that's attached to it. Attached to it is the Schedule A, which provides for the inclusion of the city council attorney in the personnel pay and classification plan and identifies the compensation to be paid to the city council attorney.
All right.
That's first reading. Now we need a, we had a motion and a vote on the city attorney. The city attorney ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, creating and establishing the non-elected office of city attorney and amending the personnel pay and classification plan to include the provisions for the non-elected office of the city of Earlanger. As indicated in the previous ordinance, the first section provides for the establishment of the, a non-elected office of city attorney, provides for the title and qualifications, the appointment, and the tenure. Section 1.5 provides for the powers and duties. Section 1.6 requires the oath. Section 1.7 eliminates the requirement for a bond. Like the previous ordinance, the compensation is established in the personnel pay and classification plan. And section 2 amends that personnel pay and classification plan to include the position of a non-elected city attorney and provides for the compensation of it. That gets us to section, to the third ordinance, which is the ordinance restricting the use of city funds for the payment, um, to a, any attorney other than those that are, now have contracts with the city and the city attorney and the city council attorney.
We done a motion and second on the third ordinance there?
We need a motion and a second.
I said a move.
He had one on the second. I, I just don't...
I'm sorry?
I'm confused at this point, just for your own benefit, as to whether or not there was a motion with regard to the second ordinance that, that...
Yeah, there was.
There was.
There was.
There was motion and second.
Because I started reading it and realized I hadn't read the first one.
Okay.
So, we've done motion and second on the first two ordinances and now we're doing the third one. Motion's been made in a second as well.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? The one thing that I would like to comment on is that each one of these ordinances does have a whereas statement in there that's not, not accurate. It's, the whereas says that I have not provided a reason and I have provided a reason in writing last week.
None of us have seen it.
So it's a, it's an inaccurate statement.
Need a motion, second?
I mo, motion.
This is just a motion to actually...
Motion to adopt, to allow first reading of the ordinance.
We're in discussion right now.
Well, he said we needed a motion and a second. I was just making sure we've got that covered because that should precede the discussion.
It was already covered, so it doesn't matter.
Okay. So, we're, so just to make sure I'm clear, we're motioning and seconding that we are taking out, to take out that whereas?
No, the motion's second. The motions? The motion I thought was for first reading of the third ordinance.
Correct. And, and I thought, my, my recollection is that there was a motion and second and then the mayor made his comment.
I, I wanted to make sure. I didn't know because we've...
You did it again or you did it for the first time?
We've bounced back and forth enough. I just wanna make sure we're covered.
So he's made his comment. If somebody, he, he's objected to the statement that he didn't provide reason, it, it would be up to somebody on council to move to, to amend the ordinance if they chose to do that. Mayor knows he doesn't have the authority to do that, but he's made his comment.
Right. Is there any other discussion?
I'm confused. What are, I'm, I'm, what reason? We never got a reason. So I don't know what the whereas...
I, I have, I, I have sent it to you. I have...
No, you haven't.
Everybody was copied via email of the, of the letter that I shared with Mr. Wickman.
But it did not have a reason in it. I read that letter. It does not have a reason in there why you dismissed him.
We can leave it as is. We can leave it like it is.
Takes a motion to argue about it.
The motion, it should stay like it is.
Yeah, it's gonna stay like it is. Exactly.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I think everybody here...
Well, and I have given a reason and it is in writing and you can do an open records request if you'd like to see it. This is part of my issue, is when I do give a reason, it's, it's never gonna be adequate.
Well, then that's no reason.
Tell that. Tell that now. Be a man. Stand up and tell everybody right here, right now, why you fired Mr. Wickman. Be a man.
I wish that's all it took, Patty. I wish that's all it took.
Recommend from the council?
So we, is there any more discussion?
Yes, there is. I would like to know who authorized this gentleman to be here and you to pay him to be here.
I, I authorized it.
You enfor, oh, okay. He won't. I'm telling you, this is...
I would, I would call for order.
This is, we, we are, we have a motion and a second on the floor regarding the reading of a third ordinance.
I called a question on it. Let's just vote on it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's the ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, restricting the dispersion of funds of the city to attorneys during the fiscal year ending on June, June 30th, 2015. Section 1 of the ordinance provides that during the fiscal year of the city of Earlanger ending on June 30th, 2015, no funds of the city shall be paid to any attorneys without a contract approved by the Earlanger City Council, except for those attorneys who now have contracts with the city and the city attorney and the city council attorney. The rest of the provision, of the normal provisions in regard to several ability conflicting ordinances repealed and the effective date in the publication. That's the first reading.
All right.
Now, there were some comments about the Commonwealth Station ordinances. You want me to read those now or you wanna wait until the normal section of the agenda?
I think we'll come through the, the normal section of the agenda.
Okay.
All right, so the next item on the list is the reports of committees. Are there any reports of committees?
Public safety, fire, uh, police, um, the chief is in the house. We have no report tonight.
All right, thank you, Sid Camp. Public safety, Mr. Skidmore, um, excuse me, Mrs. Skidmore or Mr. Meyer? All right, public works. Mr. Cahill. All right. Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. We are requesting a committee meeting on the 17th to look at the bids for Donaldson Road.
Okay.
We've been here long enough.
All right, thank you. And we've also got the waste collection committee meeting report.
Yes, Mayor. Just, um, just want you to know that the bids have gone out and we will be requesting later on into April, a committee meeting to discuss those bids. Also, uh, the community achievement scholarship, uh, proposals are due end by March 6th of 2015, 2015 at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. And, uh, the monthly, the rest of the monthly report of the administrative committee has been emailed out for council's review.
All right, thank you.
That was it.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Ms. Andrews, do you have anything further? Oh, excuse me, hold on a second. I'm sorry. Administration? I know, that's it, I'm sorry. Ms. Andrews, are you in the house? All right, thank you. Okay, economic development and finance, Mr. Blankenship, Ms. Pitts.
Finance, the, um, the staff has been conducting meetings with each of the city operating departments regarding our budget request for fiscal year 2016. The rest of the week, staff will be preparing a preliminary budget draft for review by the mayor and city council at Saturday's annual budget retreat. Breakfast will be available at 8:30 with the budget meeting beginning immediately thereafter. And then Greg, I believe you're in the house somewhere.
Where you at, Greg?
All right.
I, I was just gonna announce that we, we're going to start having businesses from the community come in to give presentations during council, just to let us know what's going on. And, uh, we thought it'd be best to defer that till next month. But, uh, Mr. Kevin Eberle, owner of Money Mailer, is scheduled to be at our April 2, 2015 meeting. He won a national award and was gonna talk about that for the city.
Our codes, uh, codes building and zoning, Mr. Dunhill?
I have two items. We received the request for zone change for a property located on Turkey, Foot and Stevenson Roads and we'll need a committee meeting for that on the 17th. And also, want to let everybody know the application has been filed with the Kenton County Planning Commission to add the use of variety store to the neighborhood commercial zone, which was talked about in the January meeting. Uh, the public hearing should be on April 2nd, 2015 and we will report back. That is the dollar store up here on Dixie Highway. It's moving in, so, uh, Kevin?
Only thing I have is on the recreation vehicles, pro, progress on that, but we wanna have a committee meeting on the 17th also. And on the 17th, we would like to discuss our trash can ordinance, all on the 17th. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you.
Dave Han, he's in the house somewhere. Dave, you here? Hi, buddy, thank you.
Our progress in revitalization?
Uh, report has been submitted, so if you have any questions?
Any questions?
Ms. Hopkins?
Ms. Hopkins, in the house? Anything to add? Nothing? All right. We've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented?
Motion.
Motion, second. Ms. Kyle? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Reports of our representatives. Are there any reports of representatives this evening? Mr. Cahill?
Okay, I will be having a special meeting in April to discuss funding for Kentucky transportation. I will be attending that, so, uh, Mr. Fields, I'll get some information to you about that, see if there's anything we need to address with them.
Yes, sir. What is the date of that meeting?
I'll have to get it to you, sir.
All right. Any other reports? All right. Reports of operations, Mr. Fields, do you have anything to report?
I do not.
All right, you've heard the reports of our representatives in city operation. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? First by Sid Camp, second by Mr. Howard. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, our correspondence. Ms. Hoffman, do you have any correspondence this evening?
No, sir.
Are there any other correspondence to read? All right, the next item on the agenda is our citizen, or no, we, we've had all of our citizens public, excuse me. Our bids. Going down to our bids. No bids to discuss this evening? All right. Our work in progress. Is there any work in progress to report? None?
Just spent, Mayor.
Oh, excuse me.
That's okay. Uh, we circulated the request for special meeting. I didn't know if it got the signatures needed to have that special meeting.
Didn't. We're having copies made and to deliver to all the members of council.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Business for the good and welfare of the city. Anything to report? All right, then moving on to our legislation. We've got the, uh, Mr. Wickman, I'll let you take care of this.
Thanks, sir. We have the second reading of the ordinance scheduling regular council meetings. It's an ordinance of the city of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, scheduling the regular meetings of the Earlanger City Council. And by summary, they, uh, provide for regular meetings to be conducted at 7:00 PM on the, hereby scheduling a council meeting room of the Earlanger Municipal Center at 505 Commonwealth Avenue, Earlanger, Kentucky at 7:00 PM prevailing time on the first Tuesday of each calendar month unless... of each calendar month, unless that day is a legal holiday, in which event the regular monthly meeting shall be conducted at the same time and place on the third Tuesday of the same calendar month. Second reading, we need a motion and vote.
All right, is there a motion? Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Sudcamp. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
We got a roll call.
Roll call.
An ordinance that needs a roll call.
Right, thank you. Roll call vote, thank you.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next ordinance, Commonwealth Station.
There are two ordinances, Mayor. The first ordinance is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. It's an ordinance of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the text of the Table of Contents in Sections 8.0 and 13.5 of the Earlanger Zoning Ordinance numbered 1850, and adding a new Section 10.26 to that ordinance to establish a new zone identified as the CS Commonwealth Station Zone, along with necessary cross-references to other sections of the zoning ordinance, as indicated in the text. It is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to create a new section and provide all of the basic information that is included in a description of a zone in the zoning ordinance.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second. By Ms. Kyle. Any discussion?
I have some comments that I'd like to make. I've spent a great deal of time trying to educate myself about this. I watched the full two-plus hours of the January 6th Kenton County Planning Commission, and there were a handful of points that, that, over the course of that time, that I've, you know, had some concerns about, some of which have been alleviated. One of the concerns that was raised during the planning commission meeting was that the planning commission attorney did not feel that architectural standards were lawful. I did present that question to Mr. Wickman. He advised that he felt that they were, and I believe you can consult with Mr. Edmondson as well, about those items. So I felt that that was alleviated. I also want to thank Mr. Han and Mr. Stewart for taking the time to address my questions that I had concerning some of the details of the Commonwealth Station Zone. One of the concerns that I had was the building requirement that said if more than 25% of the facade was changed, that the entire thing would have to be, come into code. They advised me that this requirement would only need to be met if the work that they were doing required a building permit. So any sighting changes would be considered maintenance and would not require a building permit, thus would not have to become part of the standard, or become standard. Two other concerns that I had were, one around substantive UR1, which would allow the multifamily apartment building. And my concerns here were that it's gonna allow apartment building up to 250 feet in length with a variance of up to 275 feet in length, with the building height of up to 50 feet, which as I understand, it's approximately four stories. When I try to put this in perspective, I look at apartment buildings that are across the street, and this is more than three times the size of the current either Greenfield Apartments or the Town and Country Apartments, or the Four Seasons Apartments that are there now. We're talking about an apartment building that could be nearly the length of a football field. To me, that's, and I had a wise person told me, don't be surprised when people act like people, so I would think that somebody, at some point, is gonna attempt to do this. This is, so, one of my other concerns about the multifamily zones with no units per acre restriction, the three houses that are currently on Congress Street could eventually be bought and replaced with a building that would contain at least 70 apartment buildings, or apartment units. The length of the property along those three properties is about 300 feet. I had one of my, I had previously eliminated one of my prior concerns, thinking that someone would tear down existing apartment buildings and build up these newer, high-density ones. In my meeting with Mr. Han, he actually mentioned that the owner of the apartment would, their apartment complex would actually consider such actions. And I just, I envisioned, and maybe it's just what my vision is, but almost something like a projects, you know, across the street in our gateway area. My second concern was the encroachment of the non-residential buildings onto Riggs Road. I like keeping the integrity of that neighborhood intact, and in fact, at one point, before the last changes, the left side, or the interstate side of Riggs Road was single-family, attached single-family, and I thought that was great, and I would've loved to have seen that on the other side, however it's not. While the Zone CO3 subject that currently stops at the fourth parcels and the UR1 stops at Congress, it would not be unreasonable to see these slow, these exact zones encroached towards Earlanger, up Earlanger Road towards the interstate, and also down Earlanger, Riggs Road, which is part of the pieces that just backed off. You know, it's for those reasons that I don't support this, but I wanted to make sure that my comments, and give a little bit more perspective for those who may not have actually watched the commission video or had the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Han and Mr. Stewart. Thank you, Mr. Han.
Ms. Kyle?
I have a question. I thought that when we first discussed this, we were against the multifamily, and I definitely am against multifamily, so if that's still in there, I thought we took that out. Could somebody explain that to me, why that's still in there? Because I remember having meetings where we were told that there was no multifamilies in there, because I am totally against that, because our school system cannot handle that.
The multifamily is still in the zone that exists on Centonia Avenue right now.
But it's always pre-existing.
Absolutely.
But it's changing the density of...
But it changes that little extra part over that's on Congress, it added, it added those properties on Congress, is all it did.
I agree with Gary. I think that's terrible. I don't, I don't like that at all. Other than that, I mean, I'm all for the project, but I don't like those...
Substation, yeah.
I don't like, no.
And the reason that the committee left it in there was because that's the way Centonia already is, and that was the multifamily already there. It did add just a little bit the properties on Congress that Mr. Meyer talked about.
And I actually, for that zone, I would've been fully supportive if it would, if it retained the way it was with 22 units per net acre. Now, we can actually increase up to 70 or 100 units per acre, which to me is scary to think about, that density and that number of individuals living in that small area.
It did increase the density.
Yes.
But if we took the multifamily out of the two-zone, where it was allowed before, and all that's allowed there is attached to single-family. And any other, any other apartment rentals and things would be above anything else in the Core 1. Have to be storefront on the bottom. That's the only additional multifamily.
I have no other comments.
All right.
So it basically kept the multifamily where it is.
And it expanded it, like Mr. Meyer said, to the properties there on Congress, and actually, the property that's the, I guess, electric facility now, so that's not going anywhere, I don't believe, for a while.
I would think not.
The, the one thing I would like, the minutes to reflect on this, is that, really, I guess, Mr. Wickman, as city attorney here this evening, would say that, would agree that proper notice was given to the residents inside the area. I mean, if we, Sherry, would you mind bringing up the...
Oh, sure.
The documents here, just so you can see. Okay, in KRS 100.211, if we scroll down the next page, there's a highlighted section. It says, "The planning commission shall hold at least one public hearing after notice as required by KRS Chapter 424, and make a recommendation as to the text of the amendment", yada, yada. So a public meeting had to be held, and it had to have notice by Statute 424. Okay, then scroll down a little bit further. Okay, then, later in that same, number seven, it says, "Notice of public hearing before the planning commission fiscal court or legislative body shall be given at least 30 days in advance of the hearing by first-class mail to any owner, to an owner of every parcel of property inside the area." Okay, let's scroll down a little bit further. Then it says, in 424, KRS 424, "The contents and form, or form of advertisement, any advertisement of a hearing, meeting, or examination shall state the time, place, and purpose of the same." Okay, so then if we scroll down, here, the, we've got the original letter that was sent out on August 28th regarding the meeting of October 2nd. That was originally the time when this was gonna be heard by Kenton County Planning Commission, and it was tabled from that, from that meeting. If we can scroll down to the next page, the area that was applied for in that letter is different than the current area of Commonwealth Station as we show it today. If you'll notice, the house is going up Riggs Avenue. Does that, does that look right? Okay, then we'll scroll down a little bit further. This is the, the letter that is in regard to the January 6th meeting, and it says, this is the notice that was sent out to all the property owners in the area, and it's dated December 10th, and it was for a hearing on January 6th. Now, as we just saw, the notice needs to be 30 days prior, and, you know, strict compliance with these time periods is required. So just so the minutes reflect that you would agree that, that proper notice was given.
Would I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I just had a question after you answer.
Okay, what's your question, Mayor?
I, I would ask that, I would just like the minutes to reflect that you agree that proper notice was given to the, to the property owners inside the area.
No, sir, I'm not agreeing with that at all.
Then we're, then we're out of compliance with law?
No, sir. You've omitted the reference to KRS 100.182, which says, "No zoning regulation shall be invalidated for failure to strictly comply with a publication requirement, unless a court finds the failure to strictly comply with the publication requirements results in material prejudice to the substantive rights of an adversely affected person." So no, I am not saying that the proper notice was given, although the, it's arguable that it was, because you're only talking about a seven or 10-day deficiency, but even if it wasn't, this statute saves that ordinance.
Well, I guess my point is that that, you're asking for a court to decide that, and I'm trying to avoid a lawsuit.
Nobody's gonna file a lawsuit on that kind of a flimsy basis.
Mr. Mayor, I question, did you not get an opinion from Planning Commission's attorney saying that notice was valid?
Yes, and I wouldn't expect them to say any, anything otherwise, but they referenced that the earlier meeting, they said that the notice was, they had 30 days with the prior meeting that didn't state the time, place, or purpose correctly.
Just so I'm clear, then you disagree with the legal opinion of Planning Council's, Planning Commission's attorney?
I do.
Okay, just, just to clarify that.
That's what you want on the record?
I'd like, yes.
You're, what you feel about it.
No, no, I would like our city attorney to, to reflect with it.
Explain why he's not going to.
I, I heard him.
No way, man, what'd you say, I'm not gonna do what?
What?
What did you say, I'm not gonna do what?
What you said you wasn't gonna do. You weren't gonna agree to what he asked you to agree upon.
Okay, you're right, I would not agree that that zoning ordinance was properly noticed.
Thank you, Frank. That's why we keep you.
All right. All right, so the, the minutes will reflect that. The, the next ordinance is our, oh, no, excuse me, we gotta vote on this, excuse me. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? All, all in favor say aye.
No.
Roll call.
Excuse me, thank you. Still new.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries. Our next ordinance regarding the Commonwealth Station map amendment.
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the Earlanger zoning ordinance to change the zoning map thereof, to reclassify thereon an approximate 42-acre area that is located on the northwest, northeast, and southwest side of the intersection of Commonwealth Avenue and Baker Street, with the reclassification being from the R1G, R3, PO, and SC zones to the CS Commonwealth Station Zone. By summary, that's what the first section of the ordinance provides, and refers to a map that's attached to the ordinance, which shows the outline of that new zone.
Do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mr. Howard, second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Nope.
Roll call. Roll call.
Keep doing that, excuse me. Thank you, roll call vote.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore? Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
Motion carried. Our next item is the municipal order for the SAFER Grant.
It's a municipal order of the city council of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the fire EMS department to apply for the 2015 SAFER Grant.
Do I entertain a motion? This municipal order is read.
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyer, second, by Ms. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next municipal order regarding surplus equipment.
It's a municipal order of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, making the written determination required by KRS 82.083 for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. There is attached to the ordinance a schedule showing the property that is being disposed of, and all of the other requirements of KRS 82.083.
Do I entertain a motion to accept this municipal order as read? Ms. Kyle, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You wanna pass these out to all the council and the mayor, please?
Second.
Motioned and seconded, motion by Mr. Meyer, seconded by Mr. Howard. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Give one to the mayor.
Oh. Yeah.
I don't know anything about it.